Thank you, Brian, and thank you, everyone, for being here for this February 8, 2021, meeting at the Homewood City Council. We are going to start tonight with a couple of proclamations. The first one is going to be for our own Greg Cobb. Mr. Mayor, I think you've got something for him.
Yes, please. Greg, if you'd like to come up here, your board will.
So, thank you, Ms. President. Thank you, Council. I'm sure you all recognize Greg. So, Greg, you know, of course, retired just a few weeks ago, and we're just, we're so going to miss you, and we wanted to do this proclamation for you guys. So, if you don't mind, I'll read this, and we are, as Melody mentioned, we are going to frame this, and I'll get it back to you. So, you know, please bear with us for a little bit. Proclamation: Whereas Greg Cobb has announced his plans to retire effective February 1, 2021, and is being honored by friends and coworkers who are deeply appreciative of his friendship and of his contributions to the city during the years. And whereas Greg Cobb has dedicated 22 years of service to the citizens of Homewood, he has always been a mentor for many employees and has always been known as a fair and honest man. And whereas Greg Cobb's countless skills and talents were recognized early on in his Homewood career, his promotions came quickly. He was hired as a Senior Engineering Inspector and quickly advanced from Principal Engineering Inspector to Plans Examiner and was eventually promoted to Senior Plans Examiner. And whereas Greg Cobb has earned the affection of a host of area residents who are proud to call him a friend, and his dedication to the best interests of the city has won him the highest regards of all his associates. And whereas Greg Cobb has always been admired by his peers and for his ability to solve some of the most difficult issues at a very cost-effective and diplomatic way, he has saved the city untold millions of dollars by not having to outsource many infrastructure projects. And whereas Greg Cobb has his own unique desktop filing system that we hope will not be passed down to his predecessor. And whereas Greg Cobb has a gift of storytelling of his life's many adventures and Homewood experiences, both as an employee and resident for 26 years. Now, therefore, I, Patrick McCloskey, Mayor of Homewood, Alabama, do hereby express my sincere appreciation and thanks to Greg Cobb for his contributions to the city and highly commend him for the manner in which he has carried out his responsibilities as a member of the city staff. Thank you, Greg. Thank you very much. Whatever you want to do. I appreciate it. [applause]
I just want to say thank you to everybody for giving me such a nice send-off. It's 22 years, seems like it's just yesterday. I think I've been through five or six councils, three mayors, and have worked with every department in the city at one time or another, spent countless hours with Mr. Kendrick, him trying to keep me out of trouble. [laughing]
The other way around.
It's easy to do, and zoning in particular, there's about 1,000 ways to screw it up and only one way to get it right. But it has been a joy to work here, and I've met hundreds and hundreds of our citizens and made a lot of friends. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. [applause]
He worried. She disappears on there. Take off the hat or something.
Okay.
She disappears on there.
Greg, we'll get this back in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
I promise not to call you this week. [laughing] It's okay, dude. [laughing]
All right, and so we've got a second proclamation for National 2-1-1 Day?
That is correct, and I have a guest here, Shakitha Tatum?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. If you want to come up here, and I'll read this proclamation for you. Whereas February 11, or 2-1-1, is recognized as National 2-1-1 Day annually. And whereas 2-1-1 Central Alabama is operated by United Way of Central Alabama and is part of the statewide 2-1-1 network. And whereas 2-1-1 connects the community to information about critical health and human services through a free, easy-to-remember number and through an online resource database. 2-1-1 also provides incident-specific information during times of disaster, including road closures and shelters. And whereas 2-1-1 strives to empower individuals by with the information they need to get help or give help in their local communities by making services easier to find. Whereas 2-1-1 helps relieve the burden on first responder organizations by connecting people with the non-emergency services that they need. Whereas 2-1-1 provides reassurance to callers by responding to rumors and directing them to resources for support as they work directly with local and state service providers to
an invocation by Ms. Smith, followed by the pledge.
ensure distribution of accurate information and the availability of services.
Everyone, please stand.
Bow your heads and pray with me, please.
And whereas 2-1-1 utilizes both bilingual call specialists and a phone-based translation
Dear wise and loving Father, thank you for all, thank you for and from all who are gathered
service to offer 2-1-1 information and referral in over 150 languages.
here today. Thank you for our life and our health and for your never-ending grace toward us all.
Now, therefore, I, Patrick McCloskey, Mayor of City Homewood, do hereby proclaim Thursday,
Thank you for the opportunity to be involved in the useful work of the city and for the honor of making decisions for our city and for our citizens.
February 11, 2021, as National 2-1-1 Day in the City of Homewood and urge all citizens
Thank you for loving us all the time. Grant us wisdom in our decisions and graciousness as we go through this meeting.
to further educate themselves on this helpful resource.
Thank you for your abundant blessings and please be with all those who struggle and
So, thank you very much.
need your love.
So much.
We pray all this in your mighty and matchless name.
Yes, you are very, very welcome. Thank you.
Amen.
You are very welcome.
[inaudible]
Thank you.
With diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for
Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Ms. Tatum.
which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Salter, if you will, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Walton?
Here.
Counselor Geer?
Here.
Counselor Alamon?
Here.
Counselor Wolverton?
Here.
Counselor Sims?
Here.
Counselor Jones?
Here.
I doubt Jones is in the house via Zoom. Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor Nelms?
Here.
Counselor Andres?
Here.
Counselor Harden?
Here.
And President Wyatt?
Here.
Everybody's here, with Zoom included. You got to call them.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the reading of the minutes from January 25, 2021. It's all authority.
Mike, Alex.
Would entertain a motion to dismiss with the reading and approval of said events.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Harden, second by Ms. Smith.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0. Next, we have board vacancies, and we've got two of those that have been closed. The first is the Arts Advisory Council. We've had a little bit of confusion about that one, and so I'm going to hold that one off until our next meeting. But I believe we do have a BZA appointment. Ms. Smith for Ward 4, may I?
Yes, yes. Five of the councilors, myself, Mr. Harden, Ms. Andres, Mr. Sims, and Mr. Alamon, met last Wednesday and interviewed the two candidates that we had for the Ward 4 BZA spot. Both candidates were very impressive, and I think we had really good interviews with both of them. We ultimately decided to recommend appointing Megan Hand, Ward 4 Resident. She has a degree in architecture and minors in sustainable design and regional planning. So, we thought those skills might come in handy on the BZA. So, we would recommend Ms. Hand.
All right, so we have a motion for Ms. Hand. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Nelms. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to 0.
Ms. Salter, if you'll let Ms. Hand know, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, we're still on Ward vacancies.
We are.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you told me and I forgot.
That's okay.
You have one, too.
You don't have anything else going on, I understand. No, it's, this is another one of those wonderful situations where we have so many good candidates that apply for certain positions, and of course, we can only give it to one or two or however many are on that board. So, a lot of people are still wanting to be involved. So, after discussions with Mr. Wolverton and some of the interviews that went on for the HEC, Mr. Ben Booth, I would like to appoint him to the beautification board. And I know I can't make motions anymore, so I would hope that one of you fine people would take that on for me.
I'll move to approve.
Second. Motion by Ms. Andres, second by Mr. Wolverton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so that handles all the board vacancies for tonight.
Next, we do have one addition to the agenda tonight. It will go to committee referral. It's 10:02:21. Request for consideration of climate change presentation by John Northrup, brought to us by Barry Smith, and this will go to Special Issues.
President, I just noticed, I'm sorry, 10:02:21 is the voucher, so I'm sorry, it needs to be 11. I apologize.
So, that needs to be 11:02:21?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Just noticed it.
All right, so that'll be 11:02:21. Request for consideration of climate change presentation by John Northrup, brought to us by Counselor Smith, and will go to Special Issues Committee. So, with that addition, I would entertain a motion for approval of the amended agenda for tonight.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to 0, which brings us to the consent agenda, but there is nothing on that for tonight. So, we will move on to the old business agenda. First item is 06:01:21. Public hearing set for February 22, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration of petition to vacate a strip of Park Ridge Drive next to Our Lady of Sorrow's parking lot, brought to us by Wyatt Pugh of her BEZ Department and Melody Salter, City Clerk. This public hearing has been set for the 22nd and will be carried over until that night.
Can I ask a quick question?
You can.
So far, no one has come from the church on that issue to Special Issues where it was in committee. Has anyone heard from?
I think I do have the guy's name. I talked to Jared, he gave me, so I can make a note. [inaudible]
I know that I received a call from Charles Felici and again told him, once again, that I have to recuse myself from this and could not talk to him about it. He told me he was calling other people, so if you have not heard from, we do need to get him to show up next Monday.
Yeah, because it-
I'll try and find him. I'll try and find him in the morning.
Yeah, please do, because-
Yeah.
Right, but they haven't, so far, it's been in committee twice, and they have yet to show up, and the night that we have committee is going to be the night of their public hearing.
I think one time I did speak to him, he had somebody via Zoom, it seemed like it one time. Anyway, I tried to find him, Jared, but he didn't know.
If you could just, if you could just give him a call and tell him that he probably, that he probably needs to show up next Monday at Special.
Okay, and once we set, because we'll set the time for the meeting at the end of the meeting, so we just need to let him know when that's going to be.
Okay. We'll tag him and get somebody.
No, thank you for raising that. All right, next item, 02:10:20. Bid opening held on January 4, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. for City Communication Services, brought to us by Counselors Andres and Smith. And we will start this with a report from Finance, which tonight is handled by Ms. Smith.
Yes. The committee met last week and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of accepting Jody Tripp as the lowest responsible and responsive bidder on the Scenario 1 proposal for $96,000. The motion was made by myself and seconded by Counselor Walton, and again, that was 5 to 0 coming out of Finance.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We do have, that is a motion that comes from Finance, doesn't need a second. Before we vote, let me just point something out. I've talked with a number of people about this, and as Ms. Smith said last week at the committee meeting, you know, the city finances are such as a result of COVID that we are trying not to add anything. I think the mayor actually sent out another email today letting everyone know sort of the status of where we are and that we are trying to put on hold what we can put on hold, at least until the mid-year review or next budget year, depending on how finances work out. So, that being said, what the recommendation was, was to accept Scenario 1, which, as I read it, is largely Brian doing what he has been doing with the video, maintaining the social media pages, as well as the addition of a Parks and Rec, a new Parks and Rec website. I've talked with Mr. Squires, that is who Parks and Rec wants to do that, and quite frankly, they can do that, that's their choice to make, but wanted us to accept that as part of this bid. So, we would do that, do Scenario 1. There does seem to be an appetite to discuss additional services that might, the city might want to do, and since we are not going to be paying for those anytime soon, we can continue to discuss those as we get towards mid-year review and/or the next budget year and continue to discuss what exactly those are and how we want to do them, and perhaps most importantly, what money we have to pay for them, which might affect what we want to do and how we want to do them. So, at any rate, I would suggest that with this motion, that what we're doing based on the recommendation of Finance is keeping Brian in place to do the stuff that he's been doing, as well as the Parks and Rec website. He's also, I left out, he has also done a citizen portal on his own, and certainly we want to take a look at that and if we can plug that in, if it sort of meets what we want to do with it. And so, I do think, I think we ought to look at that because we don't want to just sit on the shelf if it's something that can improve communications for the city. So, anyway, I think that's sort of what we're voting on, is that scenario. I think we will continue this conversation amongst ourselves and try to define exactly what we're looking for, for any additional work as we go along. So, yes, Mr. Harden?
Is the work that Parks and Rec are doing, is that part of that bid that we got from him the other day?
It is, so we're-
So, that is in that bid?
It is, and we're accepting it sort of on behalf of Parks and Rec at their request. Ms. Andres?
Yes, I was going to see, I would love to have, assuming this will be approved tonight, maybe an opportunity for Brian to speak to the council, particularly about the portal, just about some of the changes that he's made to the website, sort of make a presentation, you know, sort of where we are, and then maybe we can share thoughts on, you know, I don't know, that needs to be in the committee setting or?
I would think so.
Okay.
And what we may do is we may just, what I would recommend is that we add an item to the committee referral agenda, maybe next week, I don't want to put Brian in time crunch, but maybe for next, maybe we add it on the next committee referral agenda to come up at the following committee and have it specific to the citizen portal, is what I would recommend with regard to that. But I don't think that's a problem, we can do that.
So, you want some credit? We are-
We'll do it next, on the next agenda. Yeah, next, not tonight. Yes, sir, Mr. Alamon?
So, just to be clear that we are voting on some-
But the citizen portal that, we're not necessarily voting to approve that today, but that we're going to review it in committee, and then upon, if we get them to terms in term, it's something that we like and that we can-
Yeah, he's basically already created it, but it will be for us, we can absolutely, but we're not going to just shove it out there and put it, you know, make it go live. We're going to look at it, make sure it's what we want it to be, and think, see, make sure it's accomplishing the goals that we want it to accomplish before we-
Sure, I guess, you know, but, and I'll just say this, that we've seen the work of Brian in terms of the video, and I think everyone's, you know, likes it, and everything else you said in terms of social media and the website, that's who they want. We have not seen the citizen portal, so I wouldn't want to approve a citizen portal until after a review process, that's all.
Yeah, no, can we ask?
I agree, and I think that's why we're going to add that as a separate item to, for approval, when it, when it comes up in a couple of weeks. Hey, Walter has his hand raised online, Alex. Okay, thanks, Brian.
Disregard, disregard, that answered my question.
Okay, thanks, Walter.
Is, for the money he charges, will we give, in a sense, he's kind of done the citizen portal. If it takes a lot of work, is that part of the, part of the original?
That is in the schedule work.
Okay, okay, great.
But we will ask for feedback from everyone on the council. That'll be a robust discussion about, let him present what he has, and those of us, you know, we can all share what our thoughts are on what should be.
Okay. All right, so with that, there, Mr. Sims?
I just have one more question about some of the, you know, what's being approved through Scenario 1. I'm just trying to make sure, differentiate between Scenario 1 and Scenario 2. Brian in Scenario, Brian in his presentation referenced hosting focus groups to get feedback from residents. I think that could be, as it relates to the citizen portal or the revamped website, maybe communication overall. So, I'm just wondering about some details and if that is included in Scenario 1, because just looking blanketly at the attachment A to the proposed contract.
Yeah, you can come on up, Brian. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, looking at the, you know, the current contract that's, you know, came from Mr. Kendrick with the attachment, has the attachment from the proposal, which doesn't reference the focus groups, but I think that that's a key component of it, so I just wanted to get some more detail about that.
Hey, everybody.
Hey, Brian. So, let me address a couple of things as far as any of the work that I'm going to do for the city. This isn't about charging you, this is about getting the system right. So, the first thing is, is it doesn't really matter which scenario you go with. I'm still going to elevate a lot of the things that we've already talked about. It makes no difference whether you approve Scenario 2 or Scenario 1. These are things that I've wanted to put in place for some time. These are also things that I think will be extremely helpful. As far as the citizen portal is concerned, just like everything else, it's going to go through you guys before it actually goes live. There are too many twists and turns that it could take, so while it's there, you guys are going to see it before it actually goes live. I think the big thing between the Scenario 1 and the Scenario 2 is the messaging factor. That was one of the biggest things that requires that elevated amount, because the difference between informational posts and informational things and messaging are very, very different. The time that it takes to do it, the staff that's involved, the ability to reach out, you guys would have to have input. I had planned on putting surveys in order to be able to get the feedback, to find out what you want. There's, there's just a whole nother level. That said, I still plan to at least engage the thoughts and the ideas, because while, while maybe right now we don't go as robust with some of them, I still think that if we understand what everybody is thinking and what everybody wants, and that's not just you guys, but citizens as well, then at least for right now, we can put together what we need to be sure that you guys are communicating well with them and they're communicating well with you. The homepage is getting redesigned no matter what. That's part of this process. The Chamber has done a fantastic job over the years of promoting to the outside, outside of Homewood, and so I'm going to meet with them and collaborate with them to be sure that we are also doing some of the same things. But remembering that the focus for what we do is making sure that the policies that you vote on, that the citizens are part of that and they know what those policies are and they know everything that you're doing. While we can promote the city very heavily, the citizens who live here, they already know a lot of it. The point being, I know, the point being, we will still accomplish an awful lot, whether it's Tier 1 or Tier 2, and I'm not here to nitpick at which one we do. We still need to put together a good system, and we will, no matter which one you pick. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you for that.
And Brian, just to let you know, we want to be, you know, clear to constituents on what we're looking at-
Sure.
-from this point on, not whether, you know, which scenario it is, but they want to know, and, you know, we want to know before we vote so that we can, with a clear conscience, to know that we're, you know, giving constituents what they've kind of asked for, so, at least from now on, so.
And that portal, that citizen portal is something that should be a very, very good tool for them, and everybody will be able to see that and approve that before it goes out. All right, thank you, Brian. Sure. Okay. I'm sorry.
Scenario 1, what timeframe is this one?
What timeframe, oh, I'm sorry. So, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate that. So, obviously, we cannot contract for more than three years. What I would propose is two years. I think that gives some time for these things to get in place. We make sure that we've got the video going for the next two years, and I think that's consistent with the conversations that I've had. So, I would propose that we do it for two years.
When you say video up and going, I'm not sure-
The same video we're talking about, of meetings.
Of meetings.
Right. Same stuff he's been doing.
We're already, okay, I'm just trying to tease out what's, what's new versus what's existing.
I'm talking about what's existing.
Okay.
But that part of, the part is this, continuing to be there.
Correct, correct. So, I guess it would be helpful for me if we could articulate what is actually going to be new in terms of going forward from right now.
So, what's new is that he's doing the Parks and Rec website. Right. We're going to talk about the citizen portal. Sure. He may have some other new stuff that he brings to us that we, yeah, he's going to work on the homepage, but that's, that's essentially it with regard to any more sort of PR, marketing, branding component. I think we're going to continue to talk about that and how we do that, and what we want out of that. Does that answer it?
Yeah, I think, so are we basically just voting on Years 1 and 2 essentially in-
Of Scenario 1.
Of Scenario 1.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's out there.
Yep. Any, any other questions?
I did have one other quick question.
Yeah, sorry.
And it may not actually be directly correlated to this, but I know, and I think we've already paid for it, if at some point we have the ability to move back to the council chambers, we had already purchased equipment to be able to film in there, is that correct? Is that-
I don't think that's-
I don't, we authorized it, but I don't think it has actually been purchased yet.
So, we did not actually spend that?
Correct.
Well, and it was my understanding, here comes Brian, I believe-
Was that last fiscal year's budget?
Well, because we, we're not in there right now, but Brian-
Right, right, obviously.
Sorry, I'll be real quick. So, we improved maybe $500 last year's budget.
Okay.
That was for improvements in here to, related to Zoom and some other things that we needed to do and in there.
Right.
However, we have lost an enormous amount of equipment back there. Right now, we're using threads, needles, and duct tape to keep it all together, and so to, the plan was to use the portion that's left for that, and then next fiscal year, put the money back in for in there, only because we're probably not going to be back in there between-
Right, right.
So, that's, that's-
I was just trying to-
So, yes, the-
Wrap my mind around where we were with that part, because I remembered it.
You were remembering correctly that the plan is to add video into that room. We just haven't gotten to it yet because we're not back in the room. Correct. But we will do it when we get back there.
And it'll just essentially be a similar setup to what we have here-
Sure.
-from a Zoom streaming.
Yes, it'll, it'll be more like, well, yeah, it'll be, it'll be a video of what's going, goes on in there. It's got to be a different setup because of how it's set up versus here.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah.
And then again, just, just to clarify, I think, and I think I may have spoken with you about this, just for anybody that's not clear, I think, anybody that might be tuned in, this year we've encountered a lot of extra video conference, you know, needs, not just for, for council, but also adding committees and then all sorts of boards and-
Planning committees, BZA, Zoom.
There are, there are a lot of extra expenses that have come along with where we are currently.
Correct. Strama?
Just one quick, I appreciate you laying it all out for us, but just clarifying in terms of timeline for the additional parts.
Sorry, I'll be real quick. So we approved Dave $500 last year's budget.
Okay.
That was for improvements in here to, related to Zoom and some other things that we needed to do and in there.
Right.
However, we have lost an enormous amount of equipment back there. Right now, we're using threads, needles and duct tape to keep it all together. And so to, the plan was to use the portion that's left for that. And then next fiscal year, put the money back in for in there, only because we're probably not going to be back in there between.
Right, right.
So that's, that's.
I was just trying to.
So yes.
Wrap my mind around where we were with that part because I remembered it.
You were remembering correctly that the plan is to add video into that room. We just haven't gotten to it yet because we're not back in the room, but we will do it when we get back there.
And it'll just essentially be a similar setup to what we have here.
Sure.
From a Zoom.
Yes, it'll, it'll be more like, well, yeah, it'll be, it'll be a video of what goes on in there. It's got to be a different setup because of how it's set up versus here.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah.
And then again, just, just to clarify, I think, and I think I may have spoken with you about this. Just for anybody that's not clear, I think, anybody that might be tuned in, this year, we've encountered a lot of extra video. Conference, you know, needs, not just for, for council, but also adding committees and then all sorts of boards.
Planning commission, DSA, Zoom.
There are a lot of extra expenses that have come along with where we are currently.
Correct. Strama?
Just one quick, I appreciate you laying it all out for us, but just clarifying in terms of timeline for the additional parts. I know you meant mid-year review, but next time we're going to talk about it, how we're going to structure those kinds of conversations so we get there.
Sure. So what I would suggest is that we, that we get, mid-year review is not terribly far away at this point. And that we, and we have a number of items that are supposed to come up at mid-year review that we've done like this, where we've said, we're not sure how much money, or we said in the budget, that we weren't sure how much money it was going to be, so we look at those at mid-year review. I would suggest we add this to the list as an initial step and see where we are financially and decide whether we want to do something around that point or if we want to hold off until the next budget year. In the meantime, I think we can all be sort of formulating exactly what we want and be working towards that so that when we do, when it does come up, that we're ready to articulate what that's going to be. Mr. Sims?
And just, this is more for, I guess, recap too, just to make sure we, I've got this right in my head before we vote. So Jody Tripp's proposal, we're looking at it. It's, I think, 98,000 in scenario one, 96, thank you. And out of that, we're saying that for year one, about 17,000 of that is actually the website design and maintenance for the park board.
Correct.
Okay. So then we're at about, around 80,000 for what we're budgeted for this year. And we actually put 100,000 in this year's fiscal year budget coming into it. So we have some, potentially at mid-year review, we have some extra to maybe consider, some additional services should we, at that time, be ready. But this puts us in a good position to continue what we're doing, start with the citizen portal and then have room to expand as we have focus groups and other public input. And so.
Yep.
Thank you.
No problem. All right. We ready to vote? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that passes 11 to zero and is resolution 2118. All right, next item, 010220, bid opening set for February 2, 2021 at 4:00 PM for Greensprings Revitalization Phase Two and request for updates on Greensprings Revitalization. Brought to us by Berkeley Squires, our Public Works Director. And we will start with a report from Finance, Ms. Smith.
Yes, and I will say that the report is going to not match what we're about to do. But the committee met last week and voted five to zero to further slide them back to the full council without recommendation, pending the bid opening that happened the day after our last meeting, I mean, after our committee meetings and to address moving to the second lowest bidder for the landscaping phase, the phase one of the bid, because the initial bidder was unable to get a bond. I made the motion and it was seconded by Mr. Harden and again, five to zero coming out of finance.
Thank you. Real quick, before you, Mr. Squires, before you get started, Mr. Kendrick, does this need, assuming we take action on both of these, does it need two different?
Yes, sir.
Resolutions? Okay.
You have two different resolutions. The first one is, addresses the phase one project with a.
The landscaping?
Yeah, Grand Tech's LLC could not get the bond. And it determines that the next Superior Scape is, Superior Scape is the next lowest bidder and has their contract attached.
Got it. Okay.
And we would repeal a resolution 218 that we adopted where we found Grand Tech LLC to be the lowest responsible and responsible bidder because they're essentially disqualified in that they can't meet the bid specs by not being able to post the bond.
Got it.
Which we didn't learn to have to fact, after the fact.
So we'll start with that, with the phase one landscaping issue.
Correct.
Does anyone have any questions about that?
If Superior Scape is the next bidder.
Yes, they were the second lowest bidder, responsible bidder on, yeah.
Very, pretty close.
Yeah, they, that was like about a $9,900 difference.
Okay. All right. If there are no questions or comments about that, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gualtney, second by Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that's 11 to zero and that will be resolution 2119. All right, and that'll move us on to phase two. Mr. Squires, you want to give us an update on the bid opening?
Yes, unfortunately, we only had one bidder. We did, when we had our pre-construction bid meeting, we actually had four. And I will tell all of you, one of the things we heard from the majority is they are having trouble getting subcontractors for jobs that are not at least 12 to 18 months long. And, you know, for whatever reasons that is. So we only had one bidder, which was done construction. Their bid came in at $2,754,985.20 and bid alternate one, which most of you remember, takes it from basically where the old Kmart used to be up to Valley to complete. The whole thing was $607,292 for a total of three point, roughly 3.3 million. I will ask you tonight, because there was only one bidder, that we reject these bids, A, because there's not enough money in there. And then Kim Lee Horn and I have met, we actually spent about two and a half hours together last Friday going through the unit pricing of everything on there. And we've got some questions we want to discuss with them and just allow us the opportunity to sit down with them without changing the scope of work and see what, what their thoughts were on it. I know they, one of their subcontractors, I think it was kind of a last minute deal. So we would like, like for you guys to reject that bid, allow us the opportunity to sit down with them and meet and, you know, negotiate and see what we can come to. And at that point, I will bring it back to the finance committee and let you guys look at it and see how we want to proceed.
And so, and Mr. Kendrick, tell me if I say this incorrectly, but just for anyone who has not experienced bidding before, when you only have one bid, you are allowed to reject the bid and negotiate with the bidder.
That's correct.
That, that doesn't happen when you get more than one bidder.
No.
But.
If you had no bids, you can negotiate with anyone. We'd been better off.
Yeah. So, so anyway, that's, that's the, that's the process that he's talking about. Because there was one bidder, we are allowed to reject the bid and let him negotiate and then he brings it back to us.
Last question, just very quickly, what were we expecting the cost to be?
Less than that. 2.25.
All right. So any other questions or comments? In that case, I would entertain a motion to reject the bid.
Second. I'm sorry.
We need a resolution. You reject the bid and also authorize them to negotiate with the sole bidder.
So I'm assuming that's your motion, Mr. Harden, to reject the bid and allow them to negotiate. And Ms. Nelms, is that your second? We got Harden and Nelms, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that's 11 to zero. Is that actually a resolution, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes.
Okay. So that'll be 20 dash 20.
21.
21 dash 20, excuse me. Thank you. I, I was trying to say, let's not go back to 2020 and do more.
And the reason is it's a resolution is because you're authorizing them to negotiate. If you just rejected the bid, there's no resolution required.
Got it. All right. Thank you, Mr. Squires. All right, next item, 110820, request for consideration for additional street lighting and to address traffic concerns in Forest Brook, at Forest Brook Drive and Delcris. And another report from Finance, Ms. Smith.
Yes, the committee met last week, voted five to zero to recommend approval of the eight additional lights in the Forest Brook Drive-Delcris area. This, and I don't have the individual cost of those lights, Melody, but that is going to come out of the seven cents gas tax, which is line item 0422550210. I made the motion and it was seconded by Mr. Gualtney.
Do you need me to look over here?
No, it's fine. I'm.
Does it make any difference at all? I've got the number. The total number is nine, $977.28 a year.
There you go. Yeah, that sounds right. Yeah, that, that makes sense. Yeah.
If my note, if what I wrote down is right, it's somewhere around nine seven seven.
Yeah, there you go.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next item, 3121, request to set a bid opening date for citywide fire system maintenance. Brought to us by Chief Hill, County Chief Broadhead. And a report from finance, do you have a report from finance?
I do, yes. The committee met last week, voted five to zero to set the bid opening for this project for March 1, 2021 at 4:30 with deadline for submissions set at 4:00 PM.
All right, so we will carry that item over and wait for the bid opening. Next item, 150121, request for consideration of placing an ad in the Homewood Chamber of Commerce magazine. Brought to us by Counselor Smith. Another report from Finance, Ms. Smith.
Yes, and I'm going to have to ask y'all's opinion on this. The committee met last week, voted five to zero to recommend approval of funding of $1,914 from the advertising line item, which is 0111570500 to place an ad in the Chamber, of the annual Chamber magazine for Homewood. The motion was made by myself and seconded by Mr. Harden. And then, I will say, so for the last three years, y'all know, I get to do the fun ad advertising. And for the last couple of years, we've really run the same ad and just adjusted the copy. I think it would probably behoove us to freshen that up a little bit this year. So I would, I would ask, could I amend the recommendation to not exceed $2,100? So that will allow me a little bit of money to get a designer to work on that. Can I do that from the floor, Ms. Melody, Mr. Kendrick?
Just make a motion.
Okay.
As long as that was a motion.
Yes, that was my motion, to increase the cost from 1914 to not exceed 2,100.
Second.
And a second from Ms. Andrus. Any other questions or discussion? Yeah, Mr. Sims?
Yes, Counselor Smith, could you just kind of describe the purpose or the intent of the placement of the ad? I mean, I just, just background on.
Yeah, so, you know, the, the Chamber publishes an annual magazine for the city of Homewood. It's distributed to all the citizens in the city, well, all the mailboxes in the city. And we, we do a full page ad for the city to support the Chamber, one. But also, two, and they do use that as a marketing tool, the Chamber does, when they go to shows and to other meetings and things like that, they take that magazine with them and use it as a marketing tool. So, and it also, it's kind of nice to have an ad because then we have it in case we need to run it anywhere else. It's nice to have an ad in our pocket that we can use in other places too. But mostly in this case, it's to show support for the Chamber and then get our ad out to other places when that opportunity arises for the Chamber.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments? All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's 11 to zero, but it's 21 to 22. All right, next item, 120820, request to address safety concerns at Hollywood Freido intersection. Brought to us by Counselors Anderson and Harden. We have a report from Public Safety.
Yes, Mr. President, the committee met and voted four to one to recommend approval. But before we stopped, the motion was made by Counselor Harden and seconded by Counselor Nelms. Counselor Jones voted no. All right, and this is an ordinance. So, Mr. Kendrick, can you give us the first reading?
Sure. It's an ordinance to further regulate traffic in the city of Homewood and provide for penalties thereof, for the violation thereof. Bid or name by the city as follows. Every person, firm or corporation operating a motor vehicle in an eastbound direction along Hollywood Boulevard and said city should cause a motor vehicle to come to complete stop intersection of Hollywood Boulevard with the westerly line of Lopredo Place in said city. Section two, every person operating a motor vehicle in the western direction on Hollywood Boulevard come to complete stop intersection of Hollywood Boulevard with the easterly line of Lopredo Place. Section three, to every person operating a motor vehicle in the northern direction of Lopredo Place come to complete stop intersection of Lopredo Place with the southerly line of Hollywood Boulevard. Section four, every person operating a motor vehicle in the southern direction of Lopredo Place come to complete stop intersection of Lopredo Place with the northern line of Hollywood Boulevard. Section five, any person, no person shall park or cause to be parked a motor vehicle within 30 feet of the intersection of Lopredo Place and Hollywood Boulevard in the city. Section six, the violation of such ordinance shall constitute a misdemeanor and any person violating such provisions shall be punished as provided by section one dash eight of the Code of Ordinances. Section seven, the chief of police shall erect and cause to be erected appropriate lines, markings, no parking signs, stop signs and other places as described in sections one through five above. Section eight, that the provision of ordinance shall become effective immediately upon the passage and approval by the mayor and the city council.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions or comments or would like to make a motion for unanimous consent?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
We, I think, kind of went around the possible option of having a, some kind of raised stop there to cause people to have to stop there. Did we talk about that at the last? Is that not an option?
That was the, the suggestion from Counselor Jones was a raised crosswalk at the crosswalk, which is actually not at that intersection, it's further down in front of the American Legion.
This is a different intersection.
Different, well, it's in front of the American Legion from Hollywood.
To the school right at the chamber.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that was the one that was discussed about that.
Okay. So was that in addition to the stop sign?
It was not part of the motion that came out of committee, but it was something that was, that was presented, I think, as part of the Hollywood, looking at Hollywood Boulevard as a whole. So it's something that we could bring back up at some point, but it's not something that the committee sent out.
Yeah, the, the idea, I believe, was that with the stop sign, it would allow us some time for assessment of the situation as a whole to see if it slows speeds down through there, because I believe one or two of the speed zones or the, not tranches, but the, basically the categories of where they lie, there was one that was in excess of the speed limit.
Okay.
In like the 85th percentile. And I think, I believe, what's his name? Kim Lee Horn?
Clark.
Uh, Clark, Mr. Bailey, there we go. Drew a blank for a second. I believe Mr. Bailey was saying that we could go back and assess later on to see if it slowed traffic down and what impact it had on safety.
So it's possible to have both at some point?
I think so.
Okay.
You know, I think if the stop sign achieves the goal of slowing traffic down, I think we're probably in good shape not implementing it, but if it doesn't, you know, at some point, I don't see there's, don't see any reason not to revisit it and see if it needs to be put in.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Move for unanimous consent.
Second. Motion by Ms. Andrus, second by Mr. Gualtney. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Geer?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wilberton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nelms?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt.
Yes. All right, so that passes 11 to zero. Before someone makes a motion, I'll just point out a couple of things, just to acknowledge. We got a whole bunch of emails about this and, and they may not all have gotten a return email saying that, you know, we got them because there were a whole lot, so.
I tried to do receive, I mean, I couldn't.
I replied to every single one.
Did you?
I replied, yes, I did.
You're, that's impressive, because that, because it was a lot. So at any rate, I wanted to acknowledge those emails and tell everyone that we did get your emails and certainly read them and paid attention to them. So I would also point out that, you know, one of the things we talked about in committee was the uniqueness of this intersection and that hill that comes up at Lopredo that just makes it, the terrain of that intersection really is unique. And, you know, was one of the things that came with the recommendation for Mr. Bailey to put this there, put this four-way stop there. So if anyone else has any questions or comments, I'm happy to take them. Otherwise, I will take a motion for, or entertain a motion about this.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion for Ms. Andrus, second for Mr. Harden. Another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Geer?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wilberton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nelms?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yay, yes. Sorry, that's a yes.
What'd you say?
That's a yay.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes. So that is 11 to zero and that will be ordinance 20.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Can I make a quick, can I make a quick comment?
You can.
Obviously, I.
Yeah, go ahead.
Did you hear me okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I, I, I wanted to, I guess, just say that one of the procedures that we, we have done in the past on the council is to review a. i- is to review, um, a, a four-way stop after it's been implemented, you know, for, you know, within a twelve-month period. And I would request that we start doing that with some of our intersections after we pass it. Just wanted to throw that out there, that it's good to know the before and after effects of a stop sign.
Well, and I think with this particular one, that, that's already sort of in the mix to address what Ms. Nelms brought up, which is to see how it affects the traffic on that road, uh, given the fact that there are some additional possibilities that, that may or may not be needed. So I, I agree with you. I think this is, at least in this situation, this one is one that we will review and see how it is doing, um, after some number of months, whether it's six or twelve, uh, whatever. I, I defer to Mr. Bailey on what the appropriate time would be, but I think we will do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And that is ordinance twenty seven ninety-six, uh, which brings us to item thirteen ten twenty. Uh, request add handicap parking spaces on Twenty-Ninth Avenue at New Angled Spaces. Brought to us by Counselor Andrus. Uh, and another report from public safety, Mr. Waltney.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the committee met and voted five to zero to recommend approval and referral to the finance committee. The motion was made by Counselor Nelms and seconded by Counselor Wolverton.
All right, so this is just being sent to finance. Any questions or comments about that? It doesn't require a resolution, but, uh, we'll go and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that is off to finance. All right, that brings us to our committee referral agenda, uh, our amended committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion for approval of the amended committee referral agenda.
Same age.
I have no idea, so, uh, Ms. Smith is closest, so, uh, she gets the honors. I don't know who seconded it, but if someone wants to do it? Second from Ms. Nelms? It's like y'all are tired of hearing my voice. I want to get out of here. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is eleven to zero. All right, which brings us to other new business, and there's only one item tonight. Ten oh two twenty-one, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period January twenty-six, twenty twenty-one through February eight, twenty twenty-one. Brought to us by Robert Burgett, Finance Director Assistant, City Clerk, and Melody Salter. City Clerk and Assistant Finance Director, Ms. Smith.
Um, yeah, 'cause, you know, it's all about me tonight. I reviewed the vouchers this morning, and Melody, I did have some questions that I don't think ever got answered, but it was little, little tiny stuff that I think we can deal with.
I think I just saw on my inbox that he sent you.
Oh, did he send me a response? Okay, yeah, I did not see that before.
It was at, it was at five, yes.
Okay, okay, um, yeah, so, uh, let's see, um. Okay.
Number one, the invoice she asked about CDMA, so it hasn't been adjusted.
Yeah, yeah, I, I called a whole ten dollars and one cents that were off, so congratulations to me.
Well, two of them haven't been adjusted already.
Yes, okay, yeah, he did, he's got.
Three haven't been adjusted.
Yep, he got it all right. Okay, so, um, uh, anyway, I would have moved to approve the vouchers.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Uh, Mr. Drew, let me, I gotta get a second, or not get a second first, and then I'll come back to you. Second by Ms. Nelms, uh, now, Mr. Sims.
Just a quick question, um, about the, so is this something where after we approve these, um, you know, or some type of, uh, you know, accounting or open checkbook where we could start putting these on the website as we move forward and look at, um, is there confidential information?
It's not confidential, but I would tell you, it is an enormous amount of information. It would, uh, drag the website down tremendously. We've had that question before. Like, today, there was a stack this, there was one invoice for the MAC uniforms that literally took me forty-five minutes to go through, because there were so many individual invoices in between it. It would just be an incredible drag on the invoice. But they're, but they're welcome, anybody who wants to come up here and look at them, they're always welcome to.
So, thank you for that, because I'm thinking, as you're referencing, this probably isn't the right thing to include, but, you know, by comparison with like what the district has online for, like their, their open checkbook, you know, accounting, is that something that translates to this where there's a, you know, line item, itemization that we could put up? Or is, is that not the, the place and time to do this?
So, I don't know the answer to the first one, the second answer is yes. So that's something we can just, I'm, I'm happy for us to discuss, but I think we did, we would need to discuss that as part of a separate item rather than, rather than here, and I know that discussion has come up before, and I think it's something that we can, we can talk about, what we, what is feasible to do and what's not, and what also just makes sense and what doesn't. But, uh, but yes, we, we have talked a little bit about it before, um, at various times, and I'm happy to have the conversation.
President, we have some options, and if we take, if you set on that item, we have discussed it before because of some citizens talking about that as part of the communication. Robert and I can send you some examples to see if there's something that we could, the, when y'all get ready to let us know, because we could maybe have something that meets in the middle of all the information and what, what Counselor Sims is asking for. There's just some, we give you some examples when we're ready for that.
Okay. Okay, but yes, so we can come back to that, no problem, uh, and talk about it. Any other questions about the vouchers for this meeting? Okay, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that is eleven to zero, and that is, well, somebody count, twenty-one?
It's twenty-three.
Twenty, yeah, that's what I got, twenty-one, twenty-three.
Twenty-one, twenty-three.
All right, and that brings us to the end of our agenda. Mr. Mayor, you got anything tonight? I believe you do.
Glad you guys having to look at me so much tonight. Just want to, uh, say a couple of quick things. As you guys may or may not know, a couple of our Homewood businesses and one of our little free libraries, um, in the city have recently received some hate mail or hate letters. I just wanted to update you guys as, uh, as my conversation with Chief Ross, and, uh, and they are currently working on that. Want to make sure that, that you guys understand that, and that everybody listening understands that the city will not tolerate that for its harassment towards our, our businesses and our citizens. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands that, and I'll, I'll get more updates as we go through this. Uh, I do know that they have, uh, contacted the, the suspect. They do not live in Homewood, um, but, uh, but they are dealing with it, so just wanted to keep everybody abreast of what's going on. And then, uh, secondly, um, this is in regards to item seventeen oh six twenty, I believe it's on the public safety, uh, committee, uh, agenda on the table right now. This is for the Homewood Police, uh, Use of Force Policy Review. I believe it's seventeen oh six twenty, you'd have to correct me. I thought, I thought I looked it up correctly. But I just wanted to, uh, to say that I've, I am correct, good. That I have received several emails and, uh, and phone calls in regards to this. Of course, we had set up a, a much larger task force to begin with, and that's not what this one's going to look like. I do want to make sure that everybody understands, uh, in two weeks, I should have an update for you guys at the committee meeting so we can pull it off the table and talk about it then. But I, I hope to have, uh, that task force, uh, completed by then. Not the review, but the, the, the members of the task force and, uh, and have that conversation. So if there is anybody else who is interested there, welcome to text me, or, or I'd prefer email, uh, over the next two weeks, so there still is time, just to let you know. And then lastly, uh, wanted to pull this out. Going through, uh, of course, you know, my mother passed back in November, and we're going through her house and fixing up everything and finalizing estates. But one of the coolest things that I've seen in a long time is a, a little pennant, uh, that she had, uh, pressed in a book, but it's from the Homewood Junior High Indians. As they were known before we all became patriots here in Homewood. You may recognize this, Mr. Kendrick. Just a, uh, little, little piece of history that I thought was, uh, was, was really. Was really neat. But just thought that was really, really cool, and, and to see, you know, a lot of the history and stuff that, that the city has and pictures you see in restaurants around town and everything, it's just, it's really neat to see that, so. But that's it, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if I can get my mic on. Appreciate it, and I love the pennant. So, uh, before we start with, uh, other announcements, next week is President's Day, uh, so we will not have committees, so committed, we will be doubling up on the twenty-second, so when you're setting committees, just, uh, remember that. So we'll start with Mr. Waltney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Jones? Are you out there?
Walter?
Walter, yeah.
Uh, yes, I'm here, yeah, we only, I only need fifteen minutes for my committee, so I would like five if possible, but I only need fifteen minutes.
All right, thank you, sir. I will set public safety for five fifteen on two twenty-two. I just wanted to say one brief thing. I would like to commend, um, Mr. Cobb for his many years of service to Homewood. Mr. Cobb has been instrumental in the city in many, many things. One of the things that sticks out most in my mind is, besides his stories that are wonderful, new counselors, y'all are gonna miss out on some wonderful stories when you meet him on site. Those will be missed for sure, but I'm sure if you invite him out or go to his house for a cup of coffee, he'll be glad to regale you. But Mr. Cobb was instrumental in sidewalk building in this city, as alluded. And I think that's one of the things that we've made great strides in over the last ten, fifteen years, is the sidewalks that we've put in. He was also instrumental in building sidewalks in Rosedale and advocating for getting grants and such to build those sidewalks. He was instrumental in helping us get Spring Park built. And overall, anytime when you have a city employee like Mr. Cobb, that you can pick the phone up and ask him to meet you in the city anywhere, and he will drop what he's doing to do it, you know that's a person that loves this city and will do anything for it. So I wanted to commend him for his service to Homewood, and he will be greatly missed.
That he will, thank you very much. Ms. Gier?
Yes, I'll add a little bit about Greg Cobb. I first met him in my alley when we were looking at some water issues, and I'm sure, like you said, he's met many Homewood residents in that same way. So, um, even though I've only gotten to work with him a short time, uh, I, I love his, uh, laugh and his humor and, um, all his knowledge about the history of Homewood, so we'll miss you. I'd like to recognize a couple of girls' sports teams that I've read about recently. Uh, our seventh grade girls' basketball team won the Metro South Championship recently. We're very proud of them, and they were also very proud that they beat the seventh grade Mountain Brook Girls Team, apparently not something that's done very often, so, uh, congratulations to them. And, uh, Brooke Walden, a sophomore at the high school, set the six A indoor pole vault record, uh, last week. Uh, she, she pole vaulted twelve feet and one and a quarter inches, and we have some great female athletes, uh, in our system, and I just wanted to recognize them, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alamon?
I just wanted to say, unfortunately, I didn't get to know Mr. Greg Cobb, and I feel like I'm missing out, um, but I thank him for his service to the city of Homewood. I also want to say thank you to Mr. Mayor, Patrick McCloskey, for stating that hate letters will not be tolerated in our city. I think that's very important to, uh, put out there. And on the same day that Counselor Sims and I went and part of the wall breaking at the Magic City Acceptance Academy that really illustrates the fact that Homewood is an inclusive city, that we're a welcoming city, and that we draw folks who really want that experience of diversity, and, and that's what makes Homewood great. Finally, I want to say that we need to continue supporting our small businesses. The pandemic has hit them hard. You know, would plead with our residents to make sure that if and when they can, to support our restaurants and our shops. They need us. I think about Little London right next to me in War Two, and if you can, just support all these great businesses that have put their sweat, blood, and tears into making sure that Homewood is special. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
First off, let's see, I guess I was, just needed to clarify, with the request for adoption of a franchise ordinance with Spire, it's on our referral agenda, do you know anything about that, Mr. Kendrick?
I do, we're, we're discussing that, that's giving me a drive. I can't tell you that would be on the agenda or what committee needs that.
Yeah. Okay, and I'm not sure, Alex, if that's something that. Does that need to be fully just, I mean, in, in, in committee, or is it something that could be?
Well, no, we need to discuss it in committee. I don't, I don't know what else you've got on your agenda, but.
That's, that's the only thing that's new, I was gonna ask about the only other item that's been carried over a couple times now.
Yeah. C-Spire.
Oh, this is the C-Spire thing still.
So, but there's ano, there's another Spire that's coming. So, yeah.
There's already an existing C-Spire item.
Correct.
That's mine.
So.
This is R.
This is the gas company.
Right, so there are two items. There's the C-Spire that's already on there, and there's the Spire that's coming now.
Okay.
Let me tell you where we are on that. They've sent a three-page franchise document that this won't work.
That's C-Spire, correct?
Spire.
Spire.
Oh, Spire, okay, okay. Okay.
C-Spire, and then, I have a draft, I don't know what it's, it won't work, but.
Sure.
The Spire Gas Company franchise, it won't be efficient.
Okay.
And I'm asked, uh, Jim White, I was giving a lot of puke, to the Senator, to ask them for help with the existing franchise, because that's where we need to go, and I haven't got a response yet. So I doubt that we'll have that worked out in complete by a degree, if that's what you're working on.
That is, that is what I'm trying to clarify, so.
Spire as a gas company, likely not to be.
Completed.
Completed, C-Spire may be.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you should probably set your meeting in.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll set it for, uh, how long, Andy, do you need? Okay, so we'll set it for five thirty? And we'll set it for fifteen, I don't think it would take anything longer than that, from what I know, but. All right. All right. Yeah, I, I guess I just want to reiterate, um, you know, a lot of things that, that I think we have to be thankful for, uh, currently. I want to thank Parks and Rec for doing, I think, a phenomenal job, uh, allowing sports in, in some facet to, to be running right now. My kids have been able to play basketball and, and enjoyed that experience tremendously. And they've done so, you know, with cleaning protocols and masks, and, um, they've just done a really, really good job about, uh, keeping, keeping a high standard and, and moving forward with it. And similarly, uh, you know, with our teachers, um, I know that they've all had a tough, a tough year, um, starting at the end of last year. So, uh, I just want to thank them for, for their jobs that sometimes can seem thankless, especially right now with, uh, things just being so different than, than what most of us are used to, so. Other than that, you know, I, I'm excited to make the city safer, uh, whether it's an extra stop sign or, uh, crosswalks wherever they, they might be. So, um, I'm glad we, we looked at that thoroughly, and, um, you know, obviously, I feel like there was an overwhelming consensus on, uh, where most of the residents in and around that stood on it. And I think to a certain degree, we, you know, we have to consider that heavily, especially when it might, might be breaking a little bit from what normal protocol would be in, in an instance like that, but, um, I'm all for it. I think, I think it sounds like it's, it's gonna be a win, and, uh, you know, I think it'll be good to continue to look at those things around the city, so. I think that's it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sims?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to let everyone know that the beautification board meets tomorrow at six P. M. And thanks to the mayor for the addition of Mr. Booth to the board. I'm really excited about him joining. Also, just wanted to show appreciation for Greg Cobb for his years of service to the city, even though I wasn't here for much of his tenure, um, only a, a couple months, actually. But I first met him actually on a Safe Ross School project out of Paul Kent, um, six, seven years ago, before I even moved to Homewood. Met him and Counselor Hawkins at the time, um, just to, because I was doing Safe Ross School work. And, you know, that was my first interaction with him, and grateful for his time with the city. Grateful to cross paths with him again, um, and thank him for. the city. I'm grateful to have crossed paths with him again and thank him for his service. And that is all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Finance will be at five on the twenty-second, so just need, need just fifteen minutes. And, yeah, I've worked with Greg for twenty years, so it, it's been a pleasure. We've gone over a lot of agendas. I was Chair of Public Works for a while, and we've worked hand in hand on a lot of these sidewalk projects. So, it it's really been, it's been a pleasure working with him. And I know that Mr. Pugh is working on with the total number of miles that have been built with the sidewalks. Because, I mean, just so many, so many different places did not have a sidewalk, and, and now they do. So, I appreciate all of that. Also, I just want to thank everybody for understanding kind of our financial position, and appreciate the mayor, and you, Mr. White, I mean, going over the discussion with our financial position and the, and the communication services. So, we do need to watch that, that things could change at the, at the mid-year review, but, but right now, you know, that, that's kind of, that's kind of where we are with it. So, I appreciate everyone's support on that, and, and I miss being there in person. So, thank you.
Thank you. We miss you too. Ms. Smith?
Um, yes, are you setting P and D?
I think I'm going to, yeah.
Would you rather do, how, how long do you think?
I, I think I'm just going to do fifteen minutes.
Well, do you want to take, do you want to take the five forty-five to six, and I can go before five?
Do you have longer than fifteen? I, I don't want to.
Well, I have, I, I, I have a lot of, have a lot of items. I think I'm probably going to, yeah, I think I'm probably going to ask John Northrup if he can wait until March first, because I think he wants to make a presentation, so I want to give him the time to do that. But I still, even that notwithstanding, I have four other work in the right-of-way issues.
I'll, I'll take the fifteen-minute spot.
Plus the OLS.
Oh, plus the OLS thing, so, yeah.
I'll, I'll take the fifteen-minute spot at five forty-five.
Okay, all right, okay. So, I will set mine for four thirty. Sorry, special issues, folks. I knew that was going to, how that was going to go. All right, yeah, so, that. And then also, the Homewood Historic Preservation Commission is meeting tomorrow night at seven on Zoom. If anybody's interested in that, I believe it's been posted, but I have the email I can forward that Zoom. There's going to be a presentation made by a group who is going to assist in the Historical Structures Report that's being done for Union Baptist Church in Rosedale. One of the former members of the commission started that process, and then we, she ended up, it just, her schedule couldn't, couldn't tolerate it anymore. So, we have, we are working with a group who is going to make a presentation about how they plan to proceed, so if anybody's interested in that. That will be tomorrow night at seven. And just since we started talking sports, it is officially soccer season, which makes me very, very happy that we're actually having a soccer season. And the boys, the varsity team played in the Lake Shore Shootout this past weekend, won all three of their games without giving up a goal. They scored nineteen, and they won their flight. So, it was a good way to start the season. And our first home game is on the sixteenth versus Altamont, and one of party's club teammates plays on that team and is committed to playing soccer at the University of North Carolina, so that should be a good game. And just looking forward to all that that's going to be. So, y'all are going to get to hear super, really boring reports about soccer from me on the regular through the, through the rest of the spring. But other than that, I think, and, and I do, I love Greg. He is in my ward. He is now gets to call me and complain about things, which I hope that he will do, because I will get to talk to him. And, and Andy is right, if you haven't gotten to hear Greg's stories, then you're, you're missing out, because they are funny and sometimes inappropriate, but awesome.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Nelms?
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I appreciate you walking with me in the heat and looking at sidewalks and potential sidewalks, and also for answering all of my silly, non-engineering-type questions about where sidewalks can go and how far and all that stuff. So, I appreciate that, and thank you. I want to really just kind of thank our constituents and also ask and thank our council, my fellow council members, and everybody here at Homewood, and ask that our constituents understand how grateful we should be to have the professional strength in our council. And I know it's hard to see that sometimes when you're coming to us for an issue that's so passionate for you. I want to encourage you to trust your council and come to us when you need us, and let us know, because you have a lot of strength professionally and civically on this council, and that's something, you know, I'm grateful for, and I hope that constituents will look to us for and lean on us for that strength. Also, when there's an issue that's just not in your corner of Homewood, in your neck of Homewood, I want y'all to come to us. I want you to, you know, stay active and be a part of things, even when it's not specifically for your street or your side of Homewood, because becoming active in those things and being aware of how much, you know, we pay attention to and how much we try to address, it will be helpful, you know, when your issue comes up and there's something on your street or in your alley. And, you know, communicate with us, you know, help us to communicate with you, communicate with us the best you know how. And if it's in your ward, you know, reach out to your ward representative, and if it's for all of us, reach out to all of us, you know, just, you know, pay attention to how you communicate. And we welcome that, and we want that, and thank you for, you know, what you've come to us for today. And then, out of the hundred emails that I have gotten, I have answered all the ones that came in before today at noon. And just know we appreciate that. Stay active with that, you know, keep us on your agenda, you know, stay active with that, and always let us know what's, you know, important to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Ms. Andrus?
I am going to set P and D for five forty-five. So, I want to thank Counselor Jones, thank you. I, I will push back on Counselor Wolverton when he said that I did not go about the proper process, because we, we had two traffic studies.
How did you say that?
Well, you said we went outside the norm, normal process, so I would say.
And we broke from what?
Well, I.
Jones says it's been our normal process.
Well, we did two engineering studies, and we tried to put the speed radar in, and we tried to put the crosswalk in, and the pylon was absolutely destroyed by a truck. So, I just feel like I have no, I mean, in four and a half years, that is the most volume of any issue that I have ever received emails from. And that did not come at my suggestion. That came from a friend who asked if she needed to send some emails to the council, and I said, you know, never hurts to do that. And then it got put in the Garden Club newsletter, and I'm just so thankful. We did have a few dissenters, but overwhelmingly, everybody felt like something had to be done there. So, I just want to thank the council. Counselor Harden and I, it's, you know, it's a big issue for us, and we really do appreciate that. I want to give a quick Unified Command update. The big issue is supply, supply, supply. Although we opened up Phase One B today, which added one million Alabamians to eligible recipients, there is, quote, "a tiny fraction of that available as supply." So, as of February, the only people that are guaranteed to have a vaccine are those receiving their second doses. Things should change in March, but right now for February, that's what things look like. We are bringing on the Bruno event team, I should say, we, the Jefferson County Department of Health is bringing on the Bruno event team for call center capacity assistance. But the trend is way down. Hospitalizations, two ninety-one, eighty-three on ventilators, one hundred and seventeen in the ICU, and five deaths. So, that's cut in half, so it's really gone down. It's beginning two-one-one. Calls to two-one-one have gone down dramatically, too, so that's really good news. So, that's the update from Unified Command. Last week, we had the fun time of being on with J.J. Pruitt on Fox Six, so want to thank the HUC, Matt Ridge, Henry Hughes, Michelle Blackwood from Friends of Shades Creek, and our own J.B. Ross, and we did a, we had a fun cold morning on the Lake Shore Trail.
We'll order better weather next time.
Ooh, it was cold. And then, the Shades Cohaba Tunnel is back on, so if anyone wants to join us at ten o'clock on Saturday or Sunday, we will be priming the walls, getting ready for our new mural that's going to go up on the Shades Cohaba Tunnel. So, look forward to that, and that's my update.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harden?
Mine's about five pages long.
Yeah.
I have a seven-thirty basketball game that my son's last, thinks it's going to be his last game to coach, so I'm going to make it quick. I do also appreciate Greg Cobb. He cared so much about our city, and I hope we quickly find somebody else to take his place who cares as much about our city. So, I'm very grateful for him and how much he cared about making sure things were good in our city. And I'm appreciative of the citizens and their, how much they care about our city, because I know it's sometimes tough to, when you, you want something and others don't, and it's always a battle, but if you had, no one cared, it'd be a really tough place to live, so we're very grateful for that.
Thank you very much. Well, you know, one of the bad things about going last is you sound like you're repeating stuff, but, but I would be remiss if I didn't thank Greg for everything that he's done for the city and, and for me. When I first got on council, he was an amazing resource that helped explain countless things to me, whether it involved inspections, engineering, or just how things sort of work. So, he, he has always been just great, and as Barry said, he would, he happened to be, lives in our ward and Ms. Nelms' ward, which always made it fun, too, and I used to see him out just walking, when I'd be walking the dogs, and he'd be walking, and then I'd get a good story out of the whole deal. So, thank you, Mr. Cobb, we appreciate it. And with that, we will be adjourned until the twenty-second.